Good evening, I'd like to call to order the October 2nd meeting of the Groton Town Council. Madam Clerk?
Counselors Baumgartner, Atwater, Heed, Franco, Parker, Schmidt, and Granatowski. So we have two people missing, that would be Obree and Zepiri. And I understand that Counselor Obree is out of town.
Yes, she is, and she notified.
And Counselor Zepiri also has notified someone.
Thank you. Salute to the flag. Representative Bordelon, would you lead us in the salute to the flag, please?
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, excellent. All right, we are on to item three, recognitions, awards, and memorials. Counselor Baumgartner, would you read the proclamation, please, on Constitution Week?
Yes.
I'm sorry? It is.
So...
It's on page four?
Yep. Office of the Mayor, Town of Groton, Connecticut, proclamation recognizing Constitution Week 2018. Whereas September 17th, 2018 marks the 231st anniversary of the drafting of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention, and whereas it is appropriate to officially recognize this magnificent document and the anniversary of its creation, and whereas it is fitting and proper to officially recognize the patriotic celebrations which will commemorate the occasion, and whereas Public Law 915 guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America, and whereas this year the President of the United States has designated September 17th through the 23rd as Constitution Week. Now therefore be it resolved that the Town Council of the Town of Groton does hereby encourage the citizens of Groton to reaffirm the principles and ethics that the framers of the constitutions had intended in 1787, and duly proclaim the week of September 17th through the 23rd to be the Constitution Week dated at Groton, Connecticut, this 17th day of September 2018, and signed by Patrice Granatowski, Mayor of the Town of Groton.
Thank you. All right, item number four, we have two public hearings this evening. The first is 2018-295, public hearing on the sale of town-owned property.
Need to recess the meeting. Recess the council?
Oh, I'm sorry, I forgot. Okay, so let me get the time here. I'll track the time. So we are going to temporarily recess the Town Council meeting at 6:39 to go into a public hearing on the sale of town-owned property. Madam Clerk? You want me to... You're going to call it's order?
This is a publication that was printed twice in the newspaper, that by requirement by statute, and I'll read it as it was printed. Town of Groton, Notice of Public Hearing, October 2nd, 2018. Notice is hereby given that pursuant to Connecticut Statute 7-131N, a public hearing will be held by the Town Council of the Town of Groton, Connecticut, on October 2nd, 2018, at 6:30 PM in Community Room 1 at the Town Hall Annex, 134 Groton Long Point Road, Groton, Connecticut, to receive comments on the proposal to sell a 0.09 acre portion of town-owned property, pin number 260819714055, currently known as Knowank School Public Garden Property, to adjacent property owner Michael Speller. This is dated in Groton, Connecticut, on 18th day of September, and also on the 25th day of September, in the New London Day.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. And we have two people that wish to speak on this particular issue. And, let's see. If you could come to the podium and state your name and address for the record. If you have printed comments, you're welcome to submit them to the Clerk for the public record. Michael Speller, followed by Tom Olson, please.
Madam Mayor, Counselors, good evening. My name is Michael Speller. I am the property owner, along with my wife, of 15, Smith Lane, in Knowank. And we have owned that property for the past 21 years. Our property is .44 of an acre, and is bordered on the north side by the Knowank School Public Gardens. At the north border, there is a small piece of land, just under one-tenth of an acre. It's a sloping gully that drops off down from the Knowank Gardens to our property line. And it's mostly full of scrub trees and vines, and not really suitable for much other than a buffer. Adding this piece of property to our property would give us the opportunity to create an additional buffer to the north side of our property, and also to include it in our overall landscaping plan as a woodland garden. So it substantially would not change from its current look and feel to the property. This small parcel has been untouched since we have owned the property for the last 21 years. Nobody has ever gone back in there, except for myself, to clean it up occasionally, and was never used previously by the school. So in closing, we do appreciate Council's consideration to sell this property to us, and we would look forward to hopefully that happening. Madam Mayor, Counselors, thank you very much for letting me speak tonight.
Thank you. Tom Olson, please.
Tom Olson, 188 Crosswinds Drive, Knowank. I read through the report of the Planning Commission regarding their review of this sale. I was kind of disturbed, as a owner in Groton, that minor administrative, ominous situations are reacted to with just pure technical, "This doesn't meet the criteria," you know, for everything. And so I think we need to be putting some consideration, as a town, in regard to supporting requests from citizens, to just take a look at what we're doing here. If we were going off and selling acres' worth of this property for use and stuff, but when we get down to .09 acres, I think we're over-killing ourselves with the kind of reviews that were done in taking a look at this and the report that was submitted by the Planning Commission. Thank you.
Thank you. And those are the only people that have signed up to speak at this particular hearing. Is there anyone else here that wants to address the Knowank School property? Seeing none, I recess the hearing at 6:44.
Close the hearing.
Close the hearing at 6:44. Need me to gavel again?
Yep.
Close the hearing at 6:44. All right, so we are on to 4B, 2018-294, Public Hearing on Revised Planning and Zoning Commission Ordinances. And I don't have anyone signed up to speak on that particular issue. Are there any people here that wish to address that? Madam Clerk, do you need to read the call, I'm sorry?
I do. Are we opening it at 6:45?
Yeah, let's open it at 6:45.
Town of Groton, Notice of Public Hearing, October 2nd, 2018. Notice is hereby given that a public hearing will be held by the Town Council on October 2nd, 2018, at 6:30 PM in Community Room 1 at the Town Hall Annex, 134 Groton Long Point Road, Groton, Connecticut, on the ordinance to amend Paragraph 6 of Ordinance Number 286. The proposed ordinance would extend the time period to designate the planning and zoning commissions and to abolish the zoning commissions to July 31st, 2019. The full text of the proposed ordinance is on file in the Clerk's office and on the Town website, and this was dated in Groton, Connecticut, the 25th day of October, and ran in the newspaper on that day.
Very good.
The day newspaper.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
I'm sorry?
Yes.
October 25th? Did I say October?
Yes.
I meant September. Did it actually read October?
It reads October.
Nope. That's my print. That's not what it said in the newspaper.
I'm sorry?
That's my print, but that's not what it said in the newspaper.
Okay, so the newspaper had the correct date.
It said September.
Thank you. All right, so I haven't seen anyone else come into the room. So seeing no speakers on this public hearing, we will close the public hearing at 6:46. Okay. The manager has asked to address the Council and the public before we go any further on the agenda this evening.
I think most of the Council is aware of this, but it's more for the public, and to kind of get some feedback on where to go from here. The referendum language that was approved by the voters back in 2016, calling for the conversion of the existing middle schools into renovated like new, I'm talking about the bond referendum in '16, renovated like new elementary schools. As we went through the process with the state, the state has given approval for new schools because it is actually cheaper to build new than to renovate. So what we're looking at, and much of the process sort of changed due to legislative changes in 2017 that changed how that process worked, but so now we've been given permission for new schools, however, our bond language for the two elementaries says renovate like new. So essentially, what we need to do is, we're going to have to do another vote of the public to amend that. What won't happen, what it would be, is a vote to either stick with the original vote, or to allow for the change from renovated like new to build as new. So that's really the change on those two elementary schools. What I'm requesting is that the bond counsel is available to come to the meeting next week. I'd like her to prepare documents to expedite the process as fast as we can, if that's okay.
I think we should expedite the process as fast as we can. We've had enough delays with the project, and I don't want to see any further delays. Is there any objection to what Mr. Burton has proposed?
Maybe I should give just a couple of comments on why the renovate is new, besides obvious, isn't as good. With the renovate is new, when you do that, many items become ineligible for reimbursement from the state, so you're not going to, besides not having a new building, you're actually not going to be able to do everything you want to do to prepare it to be an elementary school. That's really the biggest issue. Plus, when you build new next to the current schools, you can be doing that while, you can have that going on while the middle school's going on being built. However, if you're renovating, you're going to have to wait for the middle school to be done, and vacate those two schools, which will cause a very big delay. So, I believe in the best interest to move forward with the vote of the people.
So then we would convene a special council meeting next week?
Yes, we would have Judith Blank, the bond counsel, come, update the council on what's happening. She'll have the materials prepared, and then we would recommend, if you chose to move forward with it, we would recess to a special council meeting to approve, and then come back to the council.
Okay, and then... That's where we were going next. So then it would go from us to representative town meeting?
Yeah, there's a process, however, you know, 30 days posting, you have to introduce it, and then have a public hearing, so there's some steps. But yes, it will have to go to the RTM.
And then to a public vote?
Yes.
Any questions for Mr. Burton? Okay, so then we are giving our go-ahead to Mr. Burton to go ahead and arrange the council meeting for next week, correct?
Yes.
Very good. Is that all, Mr. Burton?
So, again, to sum up, not spending any more money, it's to get more school, more bang for our bucks, so.
We will get these schools built. All right, we are on to item five. Receipt of Citizens' Petitions, Comments, and Concerns. This is the portion of the council meeting where the council welcomes comments from citizens. To address the council, please sign the sheet on the table, which I have one here already. When you are recognized by the mayor, please approach the podium, clearly state your name and address, and speak into the microphone. Each presentation should be limited to, and we only have one person, so it'll be five minutes this evening, five minutes or less, and citizens should, if possible, submit written comments. Presentation should be related to matters pertinent to Groton. Town counselors will only ask questions in order to clarify the speaker's presentation, and can respond during your responses to citizens' petitions portion of the meeting. We have one person signed up to speak, that is Kimberly Glassman.
Good evening, Mayor Granatowski and Counselors. My name is Kimberly Glassman. I'm the Director of the Foundation for Fair Contracting. I know I've sent a couple of emails...
Could you speak your name and address, please?
Oh, yes. Kimberly Glassman. My address is 55 Sharon Drive, East Haven, Connecticut, 06512. I've sent a couple of emails regarding the proposed project labor agreements on the two elementary school and middle school projects that you all were just discussing. I know that this has been a long discussion amongst the advocates of the building trade unions that I represent, and amongst all of you. I just wanted, I know I put this in the email, but for the purpose of the public record, I do want to mention two other projects in Groton that are currently ongoing. One is the El Agroso Technical High School Project. That is a project that my organization is currently monitoring. My organization, we monitor government contracts, particularly in construction, for compliance with our state's wage laws, bidding laws. We look at issues around workman's compensation, unemployment compensation, tax evasion, and of course, wage theft is the primary purpose of our organization. So, we promote project labor agreements because, by and large, project labor agreements are construction projects where we don't see those issues. We don't come across wage theft issues, we don't come across workman's compensation issues. We find that those construction projects, contractors are dotting their i's, crossing their t's, and workers are being paid appropriately. Which brings me to the two projects I just mentioned. So, the El Agroso Technical High School Project is one of the projects that we are currently monitoring for possible wage theft. We have been monitoring this project since the shovel went into the ground on that school, which was in July of last year, July of 2017. There are about 11 companies on that, in total, that we have pulled the certified payroll records of, to just make sure that they're paying their workers appropriately. I went back, as we were having conversations about the project labor agreements. Here, I went back and looked through all of those payroll records, about 1,000 pages of payroll records, and I went through each and every one of them, and there is not a single, not one, Groton resident that has been employed by those companies on that job site. This morning, I was at the water treatment facility here in Groton, another project here that I am monitoring for wage theft issues, and sadly, we've had some wage theft issues on that project, as you are aware. And I looked through, and again, I didn't go back to the beginning of that project, I would have to go sit in my office and do that, but I had about two months' worth of payrolls in front of me from, again, 11 different companies on that job site, including the general contractor on that job, and again, not a single, not one, Groton resident employed by those companies on that project. And I should add, neither of those projects were under a project labor agreement. I cannot stress the value of a project labor agreement. I think there's been a lot of misinformation that has been perpetuated. We see that a lot. There are organizations that are frankly much better funded than the trades that I represent in my organization, that make it their job to try and dissuade government contracting agencies from using project labor agreements, but that has not dissuaded the state of Connecticut from using project labor agreements, that has not dissuaded multiple municipalities, our urban communities, small towns, from entering into project labor agreements because they see the benefit of them. So I will be, I'm asking your council tonight to remove from the consent calendar the removal of the project labor agreements for consideration, which is 2018-153. It's under Consent Calendar Item 7F. I would ask that that, instead of being by consent, that that be called for a vote by roll call. I think that the members of my organization, all the building trades members, the construction workers in this community deserve a vote on this matter. They've been lobbying you for six months. So we are asking for a vote. Again, I'm here, I'm happy to answer any questions, provide any additional information, but ultimately, I'm here for a vote. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. No one else has signed up to speak. Is there anyone else here that wishes to speak? I'm sorry? Right. Ms. Bordelon would like to speak?
Portia Bordelon, 159 Schenacasa Parkway. For full disclosure, I'm an RTM member for District 2, but I'm speaking as a concerned parent tonight. Speaking of the building as new construction, one of the things that first came to mind, and I've been discussing over the last several months, and have reported, that I have concerns making sure that when we do build as new, that with the existing piping that's underneath, considering we do currently have a lead-water issue in our district, that we make sure that the piping is going to be also new. I know in other districts and other towns, they have had problems where new construction has come on board, and they did not remove all existing ground pipes, and did not properly test those pipes. So they currently have a new building with old fittings and piping coming in, which is also spitting off lead. So I just encourage that we do not make the same mistake here in Groton, and make sure that we are doing the proper testing on that. Leading into that, I still have concerns in our district about the lead-water and the quality of water in our district. I feel it is a district problem, not just a Board of Ed problem. I feel that, you know, as a community, we should want fresh drinking water for everybody in this district, and I encourage, once again, as a town, that we come together and figure out a way to improve this. As of today, not every spigot has been tested for Westside. When they initially started doing the testing, they tested random samples at certain fountains, but all spigots at Westside, as of today, has not been tested. And that's district-wide. Once we found lead at the high school and at Claude Chester, additional testing started to happen, but overall, to be fully clear, every spigot, every spout, has not been tested here at Groton, along with the community center. I know that there's still reports that positive lead has come through there. I know that our central office building currently has lead-water in it, and they provide bottled water to the whole building, throughout the whole building. So I just encourage that we continue pushing forward and making this a top priority, not only for our staff, our students, and anybody else that utilizes public buildings in this district. Also, moving forward, I know that we're also looking at, the budget season's around the corner. We have an election coming up. CIPs have already started to come out for the Board of Ed. As reviewing those, I'm seeing a lot of things on here that are coming year after year back on the CIP list. One of the ones that I feel very strongly about is the football field. It dips in, it needs to be re-crowned. The biggest problem in this district with our school, I understand that we want to build new, but if we take care of our existing foundations and repair things, we can have quality facilities. So I'm in full support of building new, but I also think that we need to take care of what we have, and our football field, that serves as our only field in our district, is needing repair. Also looking on here, they have put out information, and they're asking for money for water service needs. To me, it doesn't look like it might be enough, considering they have district-wide phones as $500,000 on there, and water needs only at $150,000. A little concerned about that. So I just, once again, encourage this town to take the water as a priority, and making sure that every spigot is tested, so we have full disclosure as to what is going on in our schools. Also with that is, they keep presenting allowable levels. I have looked at the state allowable levels. Well, Flint had allowable levels, and people were getting sick. So, do we want the allowable level? The allowable level, for me, would be zero, especially for children who are under 21, still developing. Also, I encourage everybody to come out and vote. We have a big election coming up here in the Town of Groton on November 6. I know it's not the presidential election, but it's really important that people come out. We have a referendum on there. If you do not know that we have a referendum, that is another concern. I encourage you to go to the Town website and look at this referendum. There's a vote yes, and there's a vote no. I will be voting no, because I'm afraid of what this change could bring for our district. Thank you.
Thank you. I believe there's another person who would like to speak?
Hello there.
Hello, everybody. My name is Charles Zizalkar. I live at 58 Mahegan Road, in the Knowank section of Groton. I am, as you can see, a retired person on an unlimited income. For those of you who don't know me, I just want to share a few things with you. I have been in town for 45 years, and I've served the Town of Groton for about 44. I spent 10 years on the Groton Town Council. I spent four years on the RTM as the Majority Floor Leader, and I spent 12, 14 years on the Board of Education, and two times I was on a charter revision commission. So perhaps, as you're already guessing, I'm here to just express again how I'm dismayed with what people are thinking is happening with the proposed charter change, especially those people, not all of them, who are voting yes. So my message is, a vote of yes creates a mess. A vote of no helps Groton grow. And I have the background and the experience to see how that plays itself out, and I don't understand why some people do not see that. So, as you know, you've heard these things already, and eliminating the RTM, which serves as our diverse community, and also, look what happened just before me. I just realized that was an RTM member who I do not know how eloquently she spoke, and she's analyzing the budget. In a budget referendum, we're not going to have that happen. People are going to vote yes, no, or yes, no. No, it's too little, no, it's too much. I don't think the town is ready for that. The annual budget referendum also will cost about $20,000. There's a local town that took five times to pass their budget referendum. And one of the things where I was very fortunate, when I became Connecticut Teacher of the Year and represented Groton, I received a fellowship that following year, and then I received the National Educator Award. Well, it brought me to Washington, California, Connecticut, Washington DC, and we looked at budgets across the country. And people envied what we have. We are the only people who have the current form of government, and it is working brilliantly. It's not perfect, there are some minor tweaks that could be done, but it is working. So to send it out to a, to send the budget, and bifurcated, which those of you who don't know what that means, it's the Board of Ed and the town budgets will be voted on separately. I don't think that's going to work out well for this town. And I'm really concerned about education. We finally turned the corner in this town. Our high school is recognized now as one of the outstanding high schools in the United States of America. It took a while to get there, and it happened under this form of government. We now have, where I just moved to, five families have moved in. Real estate is beginning to change, it's on the rise, and people are coming to Groton, not only for the education, but for the quality of living that we have here. I've lived in three of the surrounding towns. I chose Groton to live here. I chose to be here. They also, I don't understand why four-year terms are being proposed for the Town Council. I don't believe that's the way to go either. I think our vote should be able to be decided every two years on who we want to represent as. The minority representation, three of you, I won't point at the three of you, would not be here today if we had minority representation. How would that make you feel? You had more votes, but we have to put three, I think you're all Democrats, we have to put three Republicans on, and they didn't have more votes than you. I really don't understand the state statutes, and even locally, that we must have that minority representation. People voted for you. I only have one more minute? Oh, my gosh. And of course, the Board of Finance, to me, is just a support group. So, there's something on Facebook today, a city resident who should know better, said the town is not run efficiently, there are numerous redundancies, and he thinks the RTM can change that, and they haven't. Well, that's not true. The Freeman and the City of Groton can initiate that, and they don't want that change. So all retirees are not moving away. My children have come back, one's at Pfizer, one has a successful business. Groton is great, and we're moving forward. Don't change it. It will not make Groton great by changing. And I wish, I have so much more to say, but I know so little time to say it, but just remember, we now have better schools, open space, aquatic planes park, the Skateboard Park, the state-of-the-art senior center, the band concerts, the library system, low crime rate, parks, recreations, more than any other town in the surrounding areas, and more than almost in any other town than Connecticut. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Zizalkar. All right, and that is it, unless there's anyone else who'd like to speak? Okay. So that ends, oh, Counselor Zepiri is here? Okay, so that's receipt of citizens' petitions. So we are on to responses to citizens' petitions, comments, and concerns. So we are on to responses to citizens', petitions, comments, and concerns. Okay, seeing none, we are on to the consent calendar. Councilor Parker?
I make a motion to move the consent calendar.
Moved by Parker. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Schmidt. Yes.
I noticed that on your agenda this evening, that all the appointments to boards and commissions are in there again. And really, it's not in the regular agenda of the new business, and it really should be under there.
So under committee reports, there's personnel appointments.
Well, it should be under new business. Committee report would be the chairman.
I believe they changed the rules for the 31st Council to allow it under the consent agenda. That is permissible to be under there.
Are you good with that? Both of them are your committees. Okay. All right, so the consent calendar has been moved and seconded.
I'd like to make a motion to remove the PLA agreement number 2018-153 from the deletion list.
Second.
Okay, so Councilor Franco wishes to remove the PLA from the deletion list, and that was seconded by Councilor Baumgartner. And the way I understand this works is if there are people that wish to have it removed, it comes off of the consent calendar and goes back onto the agenda. But it's my prerogative, we're going to do this as soon as we move the rest of the consent calendar. So we'll be voting the consent calendar without 2018-153 at this point. Councilor Zepary, are you up to speed?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
You're welcome. All right, so all those in favor of moving the consent calendar, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining. So we have eight now. Yes.
I'm sure if a motion was made, don't we vote on the motion?
We, I believe the way Robert's rules are, is that it comes off automatically.
But wouldn't we have to vote to take it off?
So you're voting, you're amending the motion to accept the consent calendar without PLA. That's what the motion should be.
So that's what we just did? Did we not just do that?
Councilor Franco amended the motion, and you're voting on her amendment, right?
So we voted on, as amended, as I understood Robert's rules, if one of the members moves to take it off. Go ahead.
That's typically the case. We do handle consent agenda a little differently than most. Usually you don't have a vote on consent agenda. You just say, is there anybody who has any objection to any item? And then if they note an objection, then you remove it. So we do things a little differently than most. But typically, yes, if somebody voices an objection, you would remove it for discussion.
So we've removed it and we voted on the consent calendar. So now what I want to do at this point is to move that item. We've been talking about this since the spring. We talked about it again in the summer. So I'd like to call for a vote on 2018-153 project labor agreements. Is there someone that would like to move that? Or would you like to move it forward? What do you want to do with this? You wanted it removed from the consent calendar. What would you like to do with it?
So I would like to make a motion to remove it from the deletions from the Town Council referral list.
It's already been done. So now we are going to, you want to take, we're taking this item up right now. So we're taking up 2018-153. What would you propose?
I'm making a motion to remove the deletions from the Town Council referral list for project labor agreements 2018-153.
Councilor Franco did that?
Correct.
Already? That's been done?
From the consent calendar.
So we moved the consent calendar without it?
Now it's on our.
Now, I'm putting it up right now and calling for an action. You wanted it removed, so what would you like, what would you two like to do with this?
Well, I'll just talk about the motion. I don't agree to delete it from this referral list.
We've done that. Madam Clerk, do you want to?
I'm sorry, that vote has taken place in a unanimous vote. So she needs to know what the council would like to put it on, new business, or...
It's on the floor right now.
I was getting to that until I was interrupted.
All right, it's on the floor right now, so we need to do something with it tonight.
Correct.
Yes.
And I would like a roll call vote on this item. I'd like it to go before the council. And there isn't a way to do that, based on what you're telling me. So I'm verbalizing it to you right now.
Okay. It's on the floor right now.
Correct.
If I make a motion to have...
Would you like to make a motion?
Which I did.
Have a vote on the PLA agreement to go forward?
Is there a second?
Second.
I'd like to make a motion.
Moved by Heed, seconded by Baumgartner. So there's a motion on the floor to move forward with the PLA. For what purpose? For which building?
For elementary schools.
Councilor Baumgartner, do you second that? He added that.
I didn't hear that.
It's for the elementary schools.
For elementary schools.
So Councilor Heed is making a motion to have PLA, have a PLA agreement moved forward for the two elementary schools. It was seconded by Councilor Baumgartner. Seeing as we've had discussion twice on this, I don't know that there's much more discussion that needs to be had. We discussed this in the spring, we discussed this in the summer. Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor of moving forward with PLA for elementary schools, say aye.
Aye.
Raise your hand, please. Baumgartner, Franco, and Heed. All those opposed, nay. Parker, Granatowski, Atwater, Schmidt, and Zepary. That motion fails. Communications and reports, Town Councilors. Councilor Baumgartner.
Nothing to report.
Councilor Parker.
Just nothing to report.
Councilor Franco.
I met with Eugenia from the Groton Conservation Advocates this week to discuss the beautification committee and ways that they could assist. I attended a fundraiser for the Avery Cop House in Groton City where Jim Streeter presented a CSI lecture. I attended a ribbon cutting at the advanced training facility in Mystic. They expanded their building, and it was very well attended. I attended the Community Speaks Out softball tournament at Washington Park. Had a beautification committee meeting last night at the senior center, and we're very excited about what will come. It was a good meeting, a lot was discussed. And I received an email regarding drainage and flooding issues on the Fairway Estates. And I believe town staff has been taking care of that and on top of it.
Councilor Heed.
I attended the Conservation Commission last night, and they discussed approaches to the plastic litter referral that we had previously made. They actually are researching not only other ordinances that have happened across the country, but also, you know, the science behind plastic and, sorry? So, and I'll just move on from that. They also discussed the greenways and different ways to link them in town. They're working on maps and working at properties and talking about trails and all that kind of stuff, so very interesting.
Councilor Atwater.
Last week, I attended my last representative for the council on the contract negotiations with the teachers. That's now moving forward to mediation. And this morning, I attended the Groton First Children meeting, and they are coming to see us, I believe on the 7th of November, but there was a question about whether they should be coming to a council meeting or a cowl meeting.
We can really come to either, it's fine.
I think they're willing to come to either.
Do you have a date set? I just don't remember off the top of my head. I did talk with them, they're scheduled, I just don't write here what's due.
So is November 7th okay then? I'll tell them if that's...
Are we meeting, that's something we have to discuss, is whether we're going to meet on election night or not.
No, no, we're scheduled to meet the day after.
Oh, okay. Yeah, the 6th is a Tuesday.
The 6th is a Tuesday, and Wednesday...
So we have it scheduled for Wednesday. So yeah, it would just be a normal meeting then. Okay. And they're comfortable coming for that meeting?
Yes.
That's fine then. If that, does that work, Mr. Burt? Okay, great. Councilor Schmidt.
I did receive a call from Susan Bysowitz about the PLA. That was it.
Councilor Zepary?
I also received a call from Susan Bysowitz about the PLA. I received another call from Tally Foley in Mystic. And she noted that there's a loading parking place at the end of Gravel Street as it butts into Main Street in Mystic. And when trucks park there, it's specifically designated parking for unloading of materials for the various merchants on the street. The way the road turns, the road comes from a turn, and you come upon that as you're turning around. It's on the convex side of the turn, so it's a sudden appearance of that truck. And it blocks the view of pedestrians crossing Gravel Street and of anything that's going on a main street. I think we should look for another place for that spot. And I would propose that to the town manager.
I went on through a planning a couple months ago and talked to Public Works. It's been there for over, I guess, over 20 years. And there hasn't been an accident. You know, it's tough finding parking down there for these trucks. We couldn't figure out anything that would work immediately. And I think we'd have some real screaming if we tried to get rid of it by the business owners.
I know.
So we've taken a look at it a couple times, actually, now, but haven't figured something else out.
Would it be possible to create something for, there's a waterworks in there for sewage processing, I believe, right there?
Is that where some of the parking is going to be taken up by Central Hall, though?
I think so.
I don't think that parking is available.
We had looked at this, Mrs. Foley called me several months ago, and John actually went down, and that was one of the suggestions that she had at that time. And I believe they looked into it then.
Part of the approval on Central Hall, I believe, is to use those spots. They're not going to be really for the public anymore.
Responding to a constituent and...
And I did speak with her also, by the way. I did speak with her and gave her my findings, too. It's been about six, eight weeks, though.
Well, she probably forgets like I do.
I'm sure, I'm sure I'll discuss it with her again, too. I talk to her pretty regularly.
She's very sharp, yes. So it's me. So I've had many internal meetings, many phone calls received, and we'll just leave it at that. Many of the same correspondence you have, Mr. Yoff up in Hunting Bridge, and town staff is addressing the problem with the flooding up there. I had correspondence regarding knowing Public Gardens, and a constituent is looking for some information regarding how they are doing, meeting their goals that they had set for themselves and that the prior council had set for them. And I understand they will be in next week. Is that correct? Night Garden will be here?
Yes.
Okay. So if anyone's interested in that, you can come in next week and listen to their presentation to see where we are with that. Clerk of the representative town meeting.
That happens to be me. So the RTM met September 12th, and they voted to veto the FOIOB ordinance, but it was defeated. There were 32 members present, 13 were in favor, 17 no, and two abstentions. To veto an ordinance, it takes two-thirds of the actual membership, and there's 41 members. There happens to be three vacancies, but there are 41 members. Speaking of vacancies, there are two vacancies, three, two vacancies in District 1 and one vacancy in District 7. You have to be a registered Democrat to apply. If you're interested, anyone, 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 I can take your name at my office, and I can forward that information on to the caucus for discussion. Theirs next RTM meeting will be October 10th at 7:30 at the Groton Senior Center. That's about it.
Clerk of the council, that's you, too?
Yeah, that's me. We've had a flurry of activity surrounding November's election, the charter revision, lots of questions about that ballot question. There are two additional questions on the ballot. There's two constitutional questions from the state. And that information will be available in explanatory text. I have copies that I go out with ballots, I've been sending out with absentee ballots for 45-day, 90-day ballots. But I didn't, I don't, I mean, I can't send it out for, it's available for distribution if I make copies. But the state's supposed to supply us with a boatload, they said. So that, those questions are, one is regarding sale of state-owned land. Currently, it's a simple majority of the legislature to agree to sale, and this constitutional change would require two-thirds vote. That's one question. The other one is regarding transportation funds and whether transportation funds that are allocated should go into a special locked fund that can only fund transportation issues. So that's the other one.
Thank you. Town manager, is there anything else you wanted to report?
Just to mention, you know, we're starting to, starting to set up a series of tours for the RTM and council for our different facilities. We had scheduled it for the, I think it's the next two cowl meetings right beforehand at 5 o'clock. I've heard that from some that that might be too difficult to make. So the suggestion's been made, maybe after this month, we look at the third Thursday, so, or third Tuesday, excuse me. So I wanted to see if that would be agreeable to people, starting in November, we'll just do one department or CIP or whatever we do a month. And a lot of this kicked off from RTM members, you know, haven't had the same access for tours that council members are, so I'm trying to provide that.
So what is, what is your consensus as far as this goes? I know we had the tour at Fitch, and I know for people who worked during the day, sometimes it was difficult to leave work, get there, and then immediately come to a council meeting. So would it work, would 5 o'clock work if you didn't have to go to a council meeting after, then you could go home and eat right after the tour? Is that acceptable? Or do you prefer just for them to pick another day?
That's okay.
I'm getting nods, which is, I gave you an either-or, guys. What do you want? Third, third Tuesdays?
Third Tuesday.
Third Tuesdays? Okay. So can you see if the staff is available then, or can they be available then? Okay, great.
We're just letting them sign up wherever they want, so we'll figure it out.
So then the two that are set for October are staying? And then any going forward will be on the third Tuesday? Okay. So third Tuesday, starting November? I'm sorry?
I did have two other items to...
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay, that's okay. Sorry, manager. So there was a packet from Mr. Fitzgerald, the additional information regarding public access to Mystic Coastal, Mystic Coastal access, that was given to me on the 21st, and I scanned it and emailed. Did you all receive that?
I believe so.
I did.
Okay. I would be glad to refer that. Also, I was wondering if you were interested in the wintertime coming up at one of your cowl meetings to have FOI training. I bring this to your attention because of the executive meeting that you had in Committee of the Whole was not properly noted. You must say exactly what you're doing. You can't say a...
So before we go into executive session, we make sure that our attorney has cleared everything, and we trust, we trust our attorney that she has done things correctly. So it's up to the council. I believe before we were seated, Mr. Hennick held a FOI training for all of us, but if any of you are interested in another FOI training, we can, they can respond to you individually and let you know, and then you could let us know if there is going to be another meeting. Mr. Burt?
I just want to mention that Dick Fitzgerald package that, I did send that to Planning. We're in the middle of a study, as I've updated the council before. And John Reiner, the planning director, is working. He has contacted Mr. Fitzgerald. He's setting up a meeting so that he can provide firsthand all his background information directly to the consultant so that they have that. He was worried that loses something in translation if, you know, if it goes through a couple people first, so.
Okay. All right. Department heads, superintendent of schools, and Board of Education. Does any of your staff wish to report, Mr. Burt? And Dr. Grenier is not with us this evening, and I don't believe there's anybody here from the board. All right, on to committee reports. Committee of the Whole, we have nothing to report. We've been here doing our thing. Personnel appointments, Chairman Heed.
For personnel and appointments, we met in August and again in September, and we voted on a number of appointments and reappointments. However, one of the gentlemen, Mr. Richard Silver, we had appointed him to a one-year remaining vacancy on the Housing Authority. It's come to my attention that there's a different process that you appoint people to the Housing Authority. And they have two potential candidates in addition to Mr. Silver that they would like to consider, so my recommendation would be to move everybody who we voted on in the cowl, except for Mr. Silver, just if we can delay that.
So do you want to move the others this evening?
I would like to move everybody else.
Okay.
It's, there's a state statute that says, you know, we're supposed to give them an opportunity to identify tenants and run an election off of, however they do it.
Okay, so refresh my memory. Did this come through COW already?
It already came through COW.
Okay. So then, Councilor Parker?
Questions. If we move the consent calendar under those appointments?
Was he included in there?
Yes.
Which one was, which number was it?
Two zero one eight dash two ninety.
I would say that since it wasn't appropriately appointed per law or per state statute, that it really isn't a valid appointment. They'll crack it and bring it back, I would think.
All right. So then it's taken care of. So then you just have to add it to your next committee meeting when you have it to review that vacancy?
Sure.
Okay, very good.
Thank you.
Temporary rules, Chairman Heed.
Nothing to report.
Rules and then public safety. We have no public safety. All right. So we are on to new business, and we left off with Councilor Franco. Groton Housing Authority update on page forty. And let's see what this is. Let me get to the page here. So there's no action, so you don't actually have to read anything. So I believe we have members of the housing authority that are here to talk to us this evening. So you have the next one, Councilor Franco.
I don't have a podium.
We don't have a podium for you, I'm sorry, for your display.
Can you hear me?
Yes, please. And Mr. Greeley is going to bring you a microphone. If you could just state your names and your positions for the public, please. Thank you, Sean.
Nancy Corleone, I'm the chair of the housing authority department.
I'm Jamie Lee, I'm the property manager for the Groton Housing Authority.
I'm Robert McLeod, I'm the executive director for the housing authority.
Thank you.
So good evening.
Good evening.
And I'm presently serving as the chair of the housing authority, along with three very dedicated and knowledgeable commissioners, Rob, Bob Frink, attorney John Casey, and accountant Paul Filippetti. And the tenant commissioner, their seat is presently open, so we're anxious to fill that eventually. So we're here this evening to hopefully provide you with an overview of who we are and what we do. And I'm pleased to be here with our executive director, Rob Capaletti, as well as our property manager, Jamie Lee. With the size of our authority and budgetary constraints, we were fortunate in July of 2016 to enter into a shared services agreement with Meriden Housing Authority. And we've acquired the services and the expertise of Rob, our executive director. Jamie Lee is our property manager, and together they've compiled an informative outline for you. And Rob and Jamie will speak to that. And I'd just like to take the opportunity to invite you all to call, make an appointment, come and have a tour of both of our properties, both Pequot and Grasso. So I'm going to turn it over to, to Rob and Jamie.
I'm the mayor, Councilor.
Could you move the microphone closer, please? It's being picked up for a recording that's going to be displayed on TV.
Is that better?
Yes, please. Thank you.
Thank you for allowing us to share information. We have a variety of handouts. I'd wish Jamie to pass out to the councils that allow. Thank you. What you want to see is basically the three major documents. One is just a bullet of what we're going to talk about tonight very quickly for you, and quickly, like a fact sheet of the housing authority. The second one is just a narrative of the services that we offer and the various components of the housing authority. The third document is an application of housing, so what people who are interested in coming to the housing authority, living there, what they have to fill out, what they have to go through. And then the other handout is just, as we have on a board here, a picture of our newest conquest of renovating one of the units at Pequot Village. So I figured it would be nice to hand it to you so you can see if you drive by what we have there today and what we'll have hopefully by the end of February with this model building. So if you don't mind, I'll just continue to speak while Jamie...
Go ahead. Certainly. Did you have enough to give the clerk a copy? Thank you very much.
Yeah, we made twenty copies. We didn't know how many.
That's plenty.
So hopefully that's not overdoing it. So I'm not going to read the whole narrative that I put together for you. That's for your review at a separate time. But I'll go through the bullets. The housing authority was established by the town of Groton, 1957, by the town council and the committees of the whole, I would imagine, back then. They did that because there was a need for veterans and housing for the age population. And that's what we have still today. The Groton Housing Authority created two developments, Pequot Village, 1969, and Grasso Gardens, 1980. Both of those developments only happened because the state and the town, together, acquired the land, put the funding for it, and then the state gave the funding to develop and construct the projects that are there today. Now, as you realize, they're over fifty years old. So they are aging with very little state support to maintain these units, and also very little rental income for rainy day fund, if you will. But the housing authority has managed by their due diligence of keeping on top of the maintenance, by maintaining, getting capital funds in when state grants were available, and working with the town over the years, particularly the last four years, of getting CBDG money and other grants, tax credit grants, somewhere's up in the range of a few million dollars, to kind of patch up and modernize the existing properties, but only for a temporary solution. So just to quickly, to tell you who we serve, we serve moderate income persons aged sixty-two and older and the disabled. Disabled by state law are under the same act as elderly, so by default, we serve the disabled as well. Applications can apply in person, online, or through the mail. They can simply make a call or request an application. We mail it to them. They can either come in person, drop it off. Property management staff receive those applications and process them relatively quickly. Unfortunately, their name will go onto a waiting list. That waiting list is about two years long. Reason why I bring that up is I think it's important for the council and the public to know that this housing is available, but it's a long wait and much needed for our residents of Groton. The current rent structure is thirty percent of the adjusted income, or what's called base rent. So they have to, whatever is the highest amount, they would pay that. We put together a little sample of our, of what our base rent is. Base rent for a studio apartment is $400. One bedroom is $500. And a double, which is really just a larger one bedroom, is $550 per month. That doesn't include utilities. So it's whatever rent income would be higher to the housing authority. As you see, it's very low rental payments. So our residents are very happy. They love their two villages. They protect their property. They watch out for each other. So it's a very nice, small community. Now, just to point out, our units are very small as well. So compared to other newer housing being built, it's very, it's not very competitive. And we don't have subsidies. So the rental income that comes from the residents is the only income the housing authority has. I think that's very important, so people know this is not subsidized housing. This is moderate income housing. If you don't have income enough to afford the base rent, you can't move in. So I'd like to point that point, make that point. So what we've done in the past few years, and I've been there since 2016, we've been working on acquiring state funding, energy financing, tax credits. These are federal and state tax credits. They don't affect the pockets of residents of Groton. So it's money that's going out into the community by the state, by the governor's office, by the Department of Housing, by Connecticut Housing Finance Authority, that if Groton didn't get it, some other town would get it. So let's get Groton, get that money, so that we can improve our properties and build other properties. We're regulated by Department of Housing, State of Connecticut Department of Housing, we refer to as DOH. We, you know, housing has a whole other language, which we won't burden you with tonight, and also Connecticut Housing Finance Authority, which also really processes tax credits, issues bonds for housing, and has other programs that, through state grants and other lending programs, that they administer for the state of Connecticut or the Department of Housing. And sometimes they even help coordinate the DCD funds that are dedicated for housing. Most people don't know that the housing authority also has bond capacity. We can do our own bonding for affordable housing in the town of Groton. So we helped last year, we helped Branford Manor get the $54 million bond. We issued those bonds, we processed them for them, and they're now under construction. So we hope that's, that's something that the town recognizes, that the powers of the housing authority are pretty powerful when it comes to supporting community economic development. So the other thing that the housing authority does, recognizing that we have limited resources as far as our rental income and what the boards urging to keep our rents low, we have to, had to create other ways to generate income that will support the housing that we have today. So they developed Greater Groton Realty Corporation in 2015, kind of sat there for about a year till they hired a new executive director, they partnered with them. And we've been working with Greater Groton Realty, and it's generally us switching hats, so that it doesn't burden the housing authority. And we work, basically, to get these developments.
Right. It's really an arm of who we are, which is working out very nicely.
Housing authorities, although they have housing authority powers by the state and by the charging that they're in, they're limited under the tax credit laws and under the Department of Housing laws. So you create another nonprofit housing authority, if you will, or an arm of the housing authority, that can go out and create public-private partnerships to bring other funds in and also spur economic development in the community. But I'll bring this up really briefly. If you look at other cities like Stanford, New Haven, Bridgeport, and even Meriden now, you'll see that they were able to turn their cities around where they couldn't really burden, burden the affordable housing components of public housing or affordable housing. But they're also losing workers, because workers were getting priced out of homes. So they were able to partner with the public-private partnerships using tax credits and other investments. They were able to create taxable housing with a little bit of affordable component to it, so median income families wouldn't have to leave the area, bringing millions of dollars in for each one of those communities in development, and taxes for the community. This housing authority can do the same thing. We've been working with the Department of Planning and Zoning on other projects that hopefully will come to fruition along the way. And I hope that we have the opportunity to share that, that experience, and show the success as working together as these two departments, I believe we are. Most recently, Greater Groton Realty acquired a loan for $3 million of redevelopment money. We're going to build a model building, which is what I gave you a brief picture of. So if you were to, if you were to drive by today, what you'd see is a flat, one-level, 1950s, pretty much post-military housing, very flat, one level, 340 square feet.
No, they were eight efficiencies at about 300 square feet each.
And some of them are a little bit larger, the doubles. So very, very small. If you can imagine what 340 square feet are, you could imagine some people's big walk-in closets and maybe bathroom attached to it. Our proposal is to create this beautiful colonial-looking, traditional Groton-looking house. Even though there's eight units in there, you would think that it's really a one-family large house. And we're going to double the size of the units. But we're also going to do that using energy financing, money that doesn't go to the residents, that doesn't come out of the residents' pockets. We can borrow against energy savings, and we're going to do geothermal and solar construction there. So you'll have a solar roof. You won't have a solar panels on a roof. What you'll see is solar shingles. It'll look like a steel roof, a very expensive steel roof. But it'll generate enough power for the residents not to have a utility bill. It'll be included in their rent, and they won't have to worry about it. So for our moderate income, fixed income seniors, they won't have to worry about how they're going to heat their house this winter, whether they use the money to pay their utility bill or buy their medicine or food. Our residents are very pleased and can't wait to get back into those units.
Absolutely.
Also, you'll have geothermal system. We're going to drill holes in the ground. We're going to fill, it was a closed-loop system. That water will come up at 55 degrees, and the units will heat from 55 degrees to 71 degrees. Or in the summertime, they'll provide free air conditioning just by a fan blowing over a heat pump. Very efficient. We've modeled these buildings before, so they know they work well. I'll give you an example. An 1,100 square foot, three-bedroom, a town home uses, its heat pump goes on three times in 30-degree weather in a 24-hour period, provided people don't leave the doors and windows open. So that means that it heats, it only loses one degree every four hours. Imagine if your homes only lost that. These homes that we're building, they will, they will be that economical. They'll also be called passive house design, which is the highest standard of energy efficiency homes. So we'll build those as well. Why are we spending this extra money to do this? Because we get one shot to do this every 50 years. We're going to do it right. We're going to do it so that it lasts, so that it improves the curb appeal, and so that our affordable units stay affordable for the duration of their existence. So the last thing is that I want to talk about the public-private partnerships that we have the capacity to do. Most recently, we've been working with Greater Groton Realty Corporation and the housing authority, and with public, with private entities. Those partnerships have generated, if you will, a purse of about $200 million that we can go into the community, and we can build and develop. Market rate, mixed income, mixed use. So what does, what does that mean? So we could build a park. We could build ballfields. We can build community centers. We can build educational centers and greenhouses. We can build all kinds of different things with our public-private partnerships that gives this, these amenities back to the community for public use. I particularly heard some members of the public speak. Got me very excited to hear that kind of passion in the community. I hope we can, we can build off of that, and we can do things together with the town council, with the town manager, and other folks as we develop other opportunities. But why, why do we do that? Because the little bit of money that that raises goes back to the housing authority to support the lower-income and moderate-income developments that don't, that can't generate that kind of income. So you see, the money that the housing authority or GGRC raises goes back into the community that it serves. Doesn't leave the town, doesn't leave the state, stays here. I think that's very important. Our board is very passionate about making what we have better and doing more. So I welcome questions. I welcome visits. If you just want to sit with me and we go chat over lunch or a coffee, I'd be happy to do that as well, because I think that what we have to offer is very important, particularly that the way the state legislation is set up now, where it gives housing authorities access to funding, and their nonprofits, that it wasn't there for years. Now's an opportunity to bring that money to Groton. I hope I covered all the points. I get really excited about this.
And we are very excited to have him as our executive director, because he has brought a whole new scope of development into our lives. It's just, when I first started on the board, it was the rents, support, the housing. Well, that just does not equal out. And he is just a valuable asset to us and to the town, actually, so.
So I have a question.
Do you have questions?
Yes. You're going to build one of these structures on the Pequot Village property?
Yes. So we're going to model, do that first model.
There is the building now. It's been, it's being leveled.
Right. We're going to knock down what's there now.
So you're taking down one, one building?
And on its...
And putting up one of these.
Converting it.
On its existing foundation, we will build that. And then we'll invite the public, invite the council to come to the ribbon cutting and groundbreaking. And then we'll get feedback from our residents, feedback from the public, and feedback from the board of what they like, what they don't like as a model. We'll operate it for a few months as well, and we'll collect statistics on how it's performing. Although we pretty much can predict how it's performing, we want to make sure of that. Before we go out, get the remainder of the funds and seek the other funds, which will be somewhere around 10, up to 16 million dollars to the rest of Pequot Village, through tax credits or other private-public partnerships.
And Jamie has done an amazing job of moving our tenants around so that this can be achieved, finding different apartments for them, helping them move, helping them set up while this building is being converted.
Anybody have questions?
Any questions? Councilor Baumgartner, and then Franco.
Could you shed some light on the agreement between the Groton Housing Authority and the Meriden Housing Authority? I remember reading in the paper, maybe a month or two ago, about New London's, I think it was Bridgeport they created a relationship with. Could you shed some light on that?
So a shared services agreement is simply two municipalities or quasi-municipalities sharing the same staff. So our agreement allows, without hiring more people and spending more money, basically have a cost-share agreement, that I will be shared, and my staff in Meriden will be shared for the Groton Housing Authority, and only a fee for whatever they're doing at the time. They're doing with a limit and a max. So for example, if the housing authority was paying $60,000 a year, for example, for executive director, plus benefits, plus all the other taxes associated with it, now they only have to pay $60,000 for all the services of the Meriden Housing Authority, which is financial, executive director experience...
Maintenance.
Maintenance. All of our budgeting and all that stuff is done from a central office, and we don't have to, we don't have to bear the burden. The Groton Housing Authority doesn't have to bear the burden of all those expenses. Saved us over $100,000 so far. Saved us over $100,000 so far, and I hope it continues on.
I hope it does too.
So, that's generally what it is. I hope that answers your question.
Counselor Franco, and then Heath.
Maybe I didn't hear you. So, currently, you're at 340 square feet, and you're saying the new units are going to be how large?
They'll be double that size. So, what will happen is we'll take two studio, that building's all studio apartments, we'll take two studio apartments, combining them, making one 640 or so square-foot unit. On the plan, it shows you the...
The second page.
Shows you the second page. So, the second floor is a little bit larger, 656 on the first floor, depending on what side the unit's on, gets a little bit bigger because there's stairwells in the way. But they're between 600 and 56 to 700 square feet.
So, I had also read very briefly there, there's like a two-year wait. So, if somebody applies and in the future want to get in here, they should probably apply sooner than later.
Yes.
Is that what you're saying?
Yes.
Which demonstrates the need that we have in this town.
Definitely.
Keep that thought, because we'll probably come back in a year or so and ask to expand our development to a couple more units as we find a little bit more space around there. And maybe that waiting list will shrink to a year and a half.
Well, sometimes the waiting list is so long that by the time I get to the people, they have found another place to live. So, that happens too. So, I tell people, you know, always, you know, get in as soon as you can and...
Plan ahead.
Yes, definitely plan ahead.
Okay, thank you very much.
Counselor Heath.
First of all, this sounds like a really exciting plan. I would like to commend you for looking at different ways to be, I don't want to say conservation-minded, but energy-efficient. That's really exciting. I'm looking forward to touring your facility. My question, though, is more of, I guess, an oversight perspective. Does an outside firm audit your books, or do you do your accounting from inside?
So, that's a twofold question. So, yes, we do our accounting from the inside, but we get audited every two years. Most recently, since I've been there, the board has allowed us to get audited every year, just because it's better to know where we stand each year than to wait every two years. So, regulatory, we have to do it every two years, but we do it every year now.
All right, and I understand that we get, we have reports that come out once a year or so that, I don't know what's in the report, I haven't seen it yet, but I imagine it's pretty informative.
So, that's our annual audit.
Our annual.
Shows where we are budgetarily-wise, and it gives a little description of what we expect for the next year in advance. So, you get those anyway. Also, our board packet and meeting minutes and board report get sent to the town clerk every month. I believe you post it. So, they're available. So, our annual is kind of combining all that in a summary review, so you can get to read it instead of reading every month to see in one document what's going on.
All right.
But it's mostly financial-based.
Counselor Atwater, and then Zepari.
Just following up on Counselor Franco's question. If you're 60 years old anticipating a two-year wait, can you apply, or do you have to be 62 to apply?
Yes, you have to be 62 to apply.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
Counselor Zepari.
I was looking at the drawings, and I don't see an elevator. You're appealing to disabled people, or you're offering housing to disabled people, and you have second-floor units, and those are a walk-up, is that right?
That's correct. So, we did two things. This building just happens to be close enough that the land behind it is elevated enough that we could create a walkway to the second floor, but we also made some accommodations in our designs that we can put a lift in each unit, so that we can put a chairlift for each unit if the families living above needed that. Going forward, if we can get enough funding, we would put personal elevators, like an elevator for that building, but it's about $275,000 per elevator, which is not reasonable at this time.
Okay.
Thank you.
I'd just like to add also, in case you hear from our residents at Grasso and residents from Pequot Gardens, that Pequot is older, and our focus has to be on Pequot right now. And I know our residents at Grasso are concerned, and they voice their concerns, and we are going to address them. So, if you should hear from our residents, that would be helpful. Pequot is much older and much needier.
Maybe you can bring up the critical needs assessment.
So, I'm sorry.
Counselor Baumgartner had another question.
One last question. I knew that you have an open board seat. Have there ever been any overtures to perhaps current residents or past residents about, you know, participating in that board, especially...
We have tried. We have knocked on doors. Jamie has talked to the tenants to get involved. We had a wonderful tenant commissioner who served us and served the tenants well, went to both properties, ran meetings, brought information back, and so we have been imploring people to step forward and take her place. But, you know, everybody's willing to come to our meetings and complain, but nobody wants to be part of the tenant, you know, commission seat right now. But we do have two people who have finally...
Three.
Oh, all right. This is great. We've got three. So, we will proceed with our election, and that seat will be filled. It is to complete the term of our past tenant commissioner through July, and then we'll move forward from there.
Just to add to that, about almost five years ago now, the state added a regulatory requirement that resident commissioners become elected persons. So, to fill the vacancy, we have a method to do that, but then, once that vacancy comes forward, we have to go through a series of steps to petition the residents, to ask them if they'd like an election, to have people come forward to run an election. As you can imagine, for disabled and seniors, this is a difficult process, and sometimes it could be expensive process. Who would, who could actually campaign? And sometimes, how do they get around? It's a very difficult process and a very difficult state law to impose on seniors and disabled residents.
And very different for our small authority as well. Different in larger housing authorities where there is a committee, people are serving, tenants are serving.
The state set that regulation up with a law without, supposedly without a burden to the Housing Authority, and Meriden, I did the first one, I was the first one in the state to run that election. It cost over $36,000 for the board. This authority could not afford to do that. We had to reach out to 8,000 people. We were only reaching out to maybe 400, but it's still a very expensive process. So, we'll figure out a way to do it, and we'll get through it to follow the state law, but I just wanted to address that issue.
Counselor Schmidt.
I just want to be clear. When you have several people who are now interested in that position, the tenants will now vote on which person they want to have be on the board.
Well, interim.
So, first...
So, that will not come before us at all?
Well, this is going to be an interim position.
Right.
So, it's from this point through July.
Right.
And I believe what we will do is we're going to interview the three candidates, and we'll choose and we'll submit the name of...
Recommendation.
Right, make a recommendation to your committee, and...
And that's just from now until July?
Just until July.
Just until July.
And then we'll proceed with the election.
Come July, we have to petition and follow the state law about running an election.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Are you clear on that? Or did you ask? Okay.
Thank you.
All right, very good. Thank you very much for coming out. It's exciting to see this, and hopefully things go well for you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so now, let's see. Let me get to the right page here. Now, we are on 2018-3061, resolution approving the transfer of conservation and public recreation restrictions from the Merritt property to the Boulder Heights and Kolnaski property. So, this is, whose turn is this?
Mine.
Counselor Franco. And I believe you can just read the bold and then the "now therefore be it resolved." Is that correct, Madam Clerk?
Yes.
Did she agree?
Yes, she nodded.
Okay.
Correct, Madam Clerk?
This is the... Yes, exactly. This is a resolution, yes, correct.
Page 42. Page 42, the bold paragraph at the top of page 42, and then the "now therefore be it resolved" on 43, correct?
Correct.
Correct.
Resolution approving the transfer of conservation and public recreation restrictions from the Merritt property to the Boulder Heights and King Kolonowski properties pursuant to the Connecticut General Statute of Section 7-131D. Now, therefore be it resolved that the Town Council and the Town of Groton ratifies and/or affirms its November 1, 2016 action on referral 2016-0256 on April 10, 2018, action of the Committee of the Whole, and referral 2016-0256 and its January 2, 2018 action on referral 2017-0298, and authorizes the Town Manager, subject to approval from DEEP regarding the King Kolonowski property and the approval of the documents by the Town Attorney as to form and legal content to execute and/or accept and record on behalf of the Town all documents necessary to place the legal use restrictions on the Boulder Heights property and the King Kolonowski property as outlined above, and to effect an release of the legal use restrictions on the dedicated agreement on the Merritt property. I so move.
Second.
Moved by Franco and seconded by Heath. Any discussion, or Mr. Burt, did you want to address anything with this?
Just to mention, the DEEP had sent one version of easement that had been approved by the Attorney General's Office. I think there's probably going to be a couple minor changes we have to make, but we're right about there, right at the end. The earlier Boulder Heights property easement has been long approved, sitting at DEEP, just waiting for this process to wrap up. So, once we get it signed, we'll get them both recorded, and that part's done. So, it should be pretty quick here, though.
So, these are formalities at this point for this particular property?
Yes, AG's Office signed off on the title work. They had signed off on a current version of the easement. It's just going to change slightly, I think, so...
Great.
And it's patterned after the earlier one, so there shouldn't be any issues. It's basically the same language, just with some tweaks, so...
Seeing no discussion, we will vote on 2018-3061, resolution approving the transfer of conservation and public recreation restrictions from the Merritt property to the Boulder Heights and King Kolnaski property. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, so moved unanimously. We are on to 2018-3081, resolution authorizing the extension of the lease with Groton Ambulance. Counselor Heath.
I make a motion to adopt a resolution authorizing the extension of a lease with Groton Ambulance. I so move.
Can you read the resolution on the back, please? Thank you.
Resolution authorizing extension of lease with Groton Ambulance, whereas Groton Ambulance Association provides emergency medical services to the Town of Groton, and whereas the Town of Groton and the Groton Ambulance Association did originally enter into a lease on August 28, 1980, wherein the Town leased the Association of Town-owned land at 217 Newtown Road, Groton, and whereas the Town of Groton and the Groton Ambulance Association desire to renew and restate said original lease, now therefore be it resolved that John Burt, Town Manager, may execute the revised lease of the premises at 217 Newtown Road to the Groton Ambulance Association for the purpose of providing emergency medical services for a term ending September 30, 2019. I so move.
Second.
Moved by Heath and seconded by Baumgartner. Any discussion, or did you want to address anything with this, Mr. Burt?
No, I don't think so.
Seeing no discussion, all those in favor of 2018-3081, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, so moved unanimously. We are on to 2018-3091, resolution approving the Code of Ethics ordinance with changes. This is on page 46. Counselor Atwater, actually, let's see. Let me see. Is there an actual resolution at the end?
No. The revolving is, we'll do the doubt test.
Okay.
I make a motion to adopt the resolution approving the Code of Ethics ordinance with changes.
Second. Moved by Atwater and seconded by Parker. Counselor Heath, I'm sorry. Did you want to say something before discussion begins?
The old 45-day for the RTM to veto, that's all.
I'm sorry? Say that again?
It should be noted that this, upon vote, will become approved and that the RTM has 45 days to veto.
Right, that's listed as section nine. Yes, that's section nine of the ordinance. So, it was Counselor Heath and then Counselors Zepari.
Actually, no longer have a question.
Okay. Counselors Zepari.
I think this is a good motion. It's a start in the right direction, but I think it's incomplete. This ordinance is solely for the purpose of addressing potential financial conflicts of interest of anybody involved in the process of the towns working. There are many other ethical issues that should be controlled and should be a part of the Code of Ethics, and I think that we should be working on evolving with this code as we go along. We can pass this as it is, but I think there's much to be added to it.
And that is possible to do at a later date, Counselor Burt?
Just to mention, we have the personnel policies that dictate a lot, and our supervisors that would take care of those issues.
No problem with being redundant. I think the Code of Ethics should encompass the ethics that we expect of people who are on this board and other boards and people who are working for the Town.
If there's no further discussion, we will vote on 2018-3091, resolution approving the Code of Ethics ordinance with changes. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed and abstaining, okay. At this point, we have other business. I hereby move pursuant to Town Council rules Section 7(c) and 8(c) to suspend the Council's rules and allow the Council to consider and potentially act upon authorization of explanatory text related to the proposed charter revisions. Is there a second?
Second.
Moved by Granatowski and seconded by Atwater. This requires two-thirds to suspend the rules, so we need six votes in favor of suspending the rules to discuss this. All those in favor of suspending the rules, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, so moved unanimously. Okay, so why? Would you like to read this? I want to read it. Okay.
Resolution, whereas pursuant to General Statute Section 9-369b, the Town Council may authorize the Town Clerk to prepare, subject to the approval of the Town Attorney, concise explanatory text related to local questions, and whereas the November 6, 2018 election includes proposed Town Charter revisions, and whereas to date, the Town Council has not authorized the Town Clerk to prepare explanatory text concerning the proposed Town Charter revisions, therefore be it resolved that the Town Council does not authorize the Town Clerk to prepare explanatory text concerning the proposed Town Charter revisions. I so move.
Second.
Moved by Heath and seconded by Atwater. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the resolution, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, so moved unanimously. We are back to other businesses. Are there any other business? I'll take a motion to... Oh, I'm sorry, did you have something?
We do have coffee with the counselors coming up.
I saw your notes.
Coffee with the counselors Saturday. It's right here.
So, this is Counselor Atwater, Counselor Franco, and Counselor Parker. Counselor Parker, would you like to discuss this?
The date and time, we will be meeting Saturday. I also know it's the same day as Groton Fall Festival, which is from 11 to 3, but we will be meeting at the Groton Public Library from 10 to 12, if you guys want to come out and speak with Counselor Atwater, Franco, and myself to discuss any issues you may have and concerns. We just want to be open and available for the public.
Counselor Atwater.
I will be making homemade scones.
And I have the coffee.
I'll be there.
And he's gone to culinary school, so try scones. Anything else? I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second. Motion to adjourn by Smith, seconded by Parker. All those in favor of adjournment, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, so moved unanimously. We are adjourned at 8:05.